Thank you again for attending tonight's Rock County Civics Academy program. Our ability to provide these presentations is solely dependent on the financial support we receive from our sponsors and you, our faithful listeners. Our presenting sponsor is Havana Coffee on Hilton Avenue. This program would not be possible without the ongoing support of The Italian House and Big Radio, WCLO, WJVL. Supporters include Ragnar LTD and Ragnar Software, the John Westwall family, Dan Plushick's Janesville News Report, American Awards and Promotions, Stockman Property Development, LLC, Tim Lindau, Nowland Law. If you believe in our mission, we welcome your financial support. Materials explaining our mission and financial support opportunities are available at the registration desk or by visiting our website, commonsenserockcounty.org. With that, we'll turn it over to Rich Gruber, our moderator.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening. Welcome to this session of the Rock County Civics Academy tonight. It's our pleasure to welcome the candidates for the Janesville School Board of Trustees. We invited all of the candidates to join us tonight, and we're blessed that three of them found it important enough to be here, so I'd like to welcome you, Elizabeth. Good to have you here. Colton, thank you for joining us, and Greg, always a pleasure to have you. We've gone through the rules with you ahead of time, so there's no need to go through them again, and I'll just begin this with the first question. And remember that there's no opening statement. We'll do questions, and I'll allow time at the end for closing statements. So if you're comfortable, let's begin. Greg, I want to start with you. What are your top three priorities as a school board member, looking to the next three years?
Number one would be really setting a solid foundation for the future. We have been looked upon as a very good district. We've done many things to show that, but now we need to make sure that we have a system that is set up for longevity and the next generation. Number two would be still along that line, but financial stability. And number three, tell the great story that the students really come through with. And fortunately, we're blessed to have one of the recent graduates, Colton, here, which happens to have been the whole time I was on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Colton, same question. What are your top three priorities for the school, as a member of the school board, for the next three years?
My first one would be fiscal responsibility by listening to the public and the fellow board members and getting a good idea of, you know, a big decision we may make fiscally, doing the research that's needed, and again, valuing community input. You know, in the foreseeable future, we'll have a big decision coming up on the referendum, and it's huge to be fiscally responsible and to understand, you know, just what that referendum brings. Number two is accountability, and with accountability, you set a standard. That way, everyone from a student to a district leader has something, a goal to reach by the end of the year. And, you know, then, for me, my third thing is, is to bring my valuable input to the board as a recent Craig High School graduate.
Thank you. Elizabeth, Paul, same question. What are your top three priorities as a member of the school board over the course of the next three years?
Great. So on a personal level, my objective is to maintain my high level of involvement in the community and in the district because I believe that being involved, as I am every single day, helps me to make better decisions that are pertinent and valid for the district. I also plan to continue to remain laser-focused on academic success for all of our students and helping our district to work towards achieving, to closing achievement gaps. And then, as the two gentlemen next to me have mentioned, financial stability. School districts are in a challenging place in this point in time where funding is a challenge, and I know that as a district, we're going to work forward to staying on top of maintaining great financial decisions for our students and our district as a whole.
Thank you. Colton, I want to begin this round of questions with you. Operational referendums are different than referendums for facilities, for capital projects, and operational referendums seem to be a mainstay across the state. What's your opinion on the use of them to meet budget constraints, and is this something we should expect as a continuum within the school district of Janesville?
I do. We have, when we talk about referendums, we've been talking about this big referendum that is potentially being floated, and we still have to remember, we still need our operational and capital referendum. Operational capital referendum, do our basic things on a year-to-year basis, keep, you know, keep the lights on, pay the staff and whatnot, like, things like that. So we have to value, you know, we need our operational referendum, and during financial, you know, toughness in the times we're in now, we especially need it. And I firmly believe we have to continue to value our operational capital referendum before we talk about any other referendums. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, same question. Operational referendums seem to be the mainstay for supporting schools across the state anymore. What is your opinion on the use of them to cover budget shortfalls, and should we expect this as a continuum here in Janesville?
Well, I think it's unfortunate that where we are in education, that districts are pretty much needing to rely on operational referendums to keep functioning. If you look at the numbers, I believe more than half of the school districts in the state of Wisconsin last year relied on their operational referendums to be able to pay their bills and stay open at that capacity that they were functioning. So unfortunately, with the funding formulas as they are for the state of Wisconsin, school districts really are left with not a lot of choices, and taxpayers are being forced to fill the gaps that are not being provided at top level. So it definitely is not off the table for our district, and if you look around at most of the districts around us, you're seeing over the last few years, they have gone to referendum, they're trying to go to referendum, they're planning to go to referendum, and that's just the state of affairs that we are dealing with in districts across the state.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Greg, I agree, same question. Operational referendums have become a mainstay across the state with school districts. Is it something, in your opinion, that we should become accustomed to in the school district of Janesville?
Yes.
Is it just something that we should be planning on?
Fundamentally, the way the mechanisms go in this state, once you start on an operational referendum, you don't come off unless you're making cuts. So if we care about education, that's where we'll be. It will be operational referendum until.
Very good. This next round of questions, I'm going to start with you, Elizabeth, if I could. $580 million for facilities is a pretty impressive price tag. How do you envision this being presented to the public in justifying that amount of capital to be raised?
Yeah, that's a huge number. That's a really good question. It's not going to be proposed to the public at that large number. Simply stated, that is too gigantic. So it will be proposed through a long, arduous process of determining what our priorities are and making different phases. We will have a phase one, we just talked about this at a meeting, our school board meeting last night, and determining what are our phase one objectives, because we simply cannot, across this very large district and all of the facilities that we have to maintain, we can't focus on everything at one time. So we're going to have to find the highest priority needs. I always say, if your roof is leaking, you're not going to be putting in new carpeting. So there will be things that we will absolutely have to do, and determining with the support of our community members and other partners to determine those high priority areas. That's where we'll start, and we'll continue from there. Yeah.
Thank you. Greg, I agree, same question. $580 million for facilities is a huge chunk of change. It's an eye-opener. How do you envision it being presented to the public and selling it?
Someone out there that wants to give the district 580 million will take it. It's, well, it's about 15 of us here at the moment, and if we all had issues with our homes, if we all had issues with our homes that we needed to replace the heating system because it wasn't working quite right, our windows were leaking, but that's okay, we can still function, we could do all of that, but our houses really wouldn't have improved at all. So if we want to, if we care about the students of the future, we have to think long-term. Long-term includes addressing some of the fixes, but until we have a true long-term vision of what we'll have for the district, we really will be stuck trying to wrestle with what will we do with approaching this. So not an easy answer, big number, we'll work through it.
Okay, thank you. Colton, 580 million dollars for capital, that's a huge number. How do you envision it being presented to the public?
First, that is a huge number, and that number will not be presented. To my knowledge, we have sent to the principals and some staff at each schools to look at and prioritize what we really need at each building. That way, we can come back with a number that is potentially something we can get behind. But again, we also have to look at, we have to pass our operational capital referendum first before we look at that referendum. And so I think we got to value that and value community input. One other thing I'd like to add with that, though, is we're talking about 580 million for our buildings, but, you know, maybe we should invest that into our strategic plan and our students and staff, because new buildings don't teach our kids, our education and our staff do.
Thank you. Start this next round with you, Greg. How do you reconcile the student achievement gap when we're talking of as large a capital referendum as we face over the course of time and the operational referendums that we have in line? How do you reconcile the student achievement gap that we have?
A pretty easy, the operational referendum, as you asked earlier, is fundamental. We don't need to make any cuts within staff or our operational, our operations period. We can't make any cuts there. But I grew up in St. Louis, Missouri, and I know the buildings that I went to. I would have loved to have been in our current buildings. I know for a fact, I know for a fact, that absolutely the teachers, leaders, make the difference. You could give me crappy buildings with leaks, and it can be cold, but the teachers, they touch the kids, and will drive absolutely great achievement, but you got to want to be there. I mean, so that is part of what we have to do, is make school inviting, not by looks, but by the people connections.
Thank you. Elizabeth, how do you reconcile the student achievement gap?
So if we want to continue to close the gaps that are well-established, we understand, recognize that they exist. We have been chipping away at them, we have been working very diligently, our administrative team, our staff, our principals have been highly focused on this. We're not going to make progress if we have cuts. It will not. We have to be very focused on maintaining the high level of education, the great opportunities that we have, and stay committed to not only maintaining programming, but looking for ways to expand programming for our students, for their academic success. Cuts are not going to make the gains that we want to make. We know that we're an amazing district, and we're going to move forward, but cuts are not the way that that's going to happen. Yeah.
Thank you. Colton, same question. How do you reconcile the student achievement gap?
So my number one priority is students and staff achievement, and what we need is that operational referendum. We cannot afford to make cuts. I call our teachers the frontline of the district because they connect with our students on a day-to-day basis, and they make them successful. I know from a personal standpoint, I was just at, in a classroom a year ago, and I know what goes on, and I know that we need those teachers in the buildings. We cannot afford to lose those teachers. I was at the district building today, a lot of great things going on, and we need to keep that, the staff and administrators in this district in order to be successful and continue to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we'll start with you, Colton, if you could. I've heard many academic experts say that if you could somehow solve the problem of student accountability and truancy, we would be moving monumental steps forward with academic performance. How do you, how do you solve the problem of parental and student accountability?
You know, first, we need to stress the accountability to the parents and students more, and going on with that, we need to get more of their input, and we need to ask for more of their input. But just last year, to my knowledge, we had a close to quarter, a quarter of our students that were, I can't think of the word, but they chronically absent, I think, is what they, is what we say. And that is really concerning, and to think that half of that percentage is K through eight kids, where it's more up to the parents to get them to school than it is a high, you know, a high school kid to get themselves to school. So we really need to value going to school and need to get more parental involvement. Thank you.
Elizabeth, same question. How do you, how do you get to parental and student accountability and solve the issue of truancy?
I think a huge opportunity that we take advantage of and will continue to expand on is building partnerships between our schools and our homes and families. Some adults did not have a great experience as a child with schools and often don't feel that they belong there. And so I think our schools can continue to make sure that our families feel welcome and that we are offering inclusive environments, and sometimes that may be making sure that the languages that are spoken in our schools, the messaging that families receive, are making sure, if they're speaking another language at home, that the materials they're receiving are in those languages, and building relationships. Positive communication between our schools and our families is paramount. I know what it's like when you hear a positive message, and I know what it's like when you don't, and you sure feel good. The more positive messages and partnerships that are built and established, that makes a big difference.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Greg, the same question. How do you build accountability into the system? How do you, how do you bring accountability to parents and students?
Yeah, it's the three-legged stool, parents, children, and the school district. We have to make sure that we're on point as a district entity. We can't make up for parents not being there. So particularly at the elementary level, K through five, we have to be more open and relationship-wise, connect with parents. So the kids can come, but they have a thirst and a hunger. And when we go to the secondary level, the students can make up for absent parents. So we have to make sure that they see, that they see the value of education such that they, nothing can stop them from coming. Nothing can stop them from coming. So as long as we can tie our goals for the students and their student-focused, the students can make up for parents. The reality is, we will have parents that are disconnected. Let's not use that as an excuse.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we'll begin with you, Elizabeth, if we could. Homelessness is a major problem for some students in our district. How do you assess the district services, and what should be done to address the problem more effectively?
Yeah, it is a huge problem. I have participated in a community group where I was able to recently, this last school year, hear homeless students speak about their struggles that they have, and it is really, really very challenging for our students and families who are experiencing that. I know that we have services throughout our district, we have some really amazing teams working to support our students, but there's more that can be done. And I believe that probably working with partners outside in the community to help provide the additional supports that need to be provided to the students with these challenges would be very beneficial for all.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Greg, I agree, homelessness is a major problem for some students. How do you assess the district services, and what can be done to improve upon them?
Our services actually are really well. It is shocking to understand the true level of homelessness of the students. They don't necessarily come and say, hey, I'm homeless, so you have to let them tell their story, you have to meet them where they're at, so that we're doing the best that we can as an entity to connect and really supply everything that the students need. But then we have to remember that we don't necessarily know how any of the students are, whether, because you can be in a home, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a home. So with that in mind, we have to meet the students where they're at and be open and let them share their story and the services that go along with that.
Thanks, Greg. Colton with the same question. Homelessness is a major problem for some students. How do you assess the district services, and what can be done to improve those services?
It's a huge problem, not only in the district, but in our community. A lot more people are homeless than we think, especially in the district and in the community. I do firmly believe that our district does the best they can and provides the best they can, but not all students are going to come up, are going to be proud to come up and say, hey, I'm homeless, you know, I need your help. It doesn't work that way. My dad and I and some friends, we did, we started a local group during Christmas holiday time to provide food and clothing and whatnot, and I can't tell you how many young kids were part of those drop-offs and probably part of the Janesville School District. So we need to ask the community for some more support.
Thank you. This next round, we will begin with you, Greg, if we could. Special education programs seem a little bit like an abandoned stepchild. What can be done to address the priority that they, as a population, deserve?
I said they as a population, the ever-increasing population of special education. Well, I'd say first and foremost, and I think about when I came on the board some 16 years ago, and I think about, you know, individual education plans for everybody, individual. So yes, special ed is a title, but isn't it special ed for all? So I think as much as, if we can think about connecting with all of the students and meeting them where they're at and providing what they need, then the better off we are. It's going to be underfunded by the federal government, by the state government, and we know that. So it becomes imperative on us to really meet the needs of the student.
Thank you. Colton, same question. Special education programs seem a little bit like an abandoned stepchild. How do we move them in the priority system for the funding and support that they require?
My response is very similar, very similar to what Greg had mentioned. First, I have that sort of experience and knowledge to that background of students. My mom is a specialized teacher, so I kind of got the grasp of what some of them need and some don't need and whatnot, and there's a lot to take to classify that and whatnot. I think you need to solely reach out to the student one-on-one so you can firmly see what that student needs and not just assume what the student needs and not just put him with a group of kids and say, this is what he's, he or she's going to get, because you don't know that until you connect with the student. And I do really think that it takes a lot of one-on-one conversation to understand what a student really may need from, you know, general population of a school to special education of a school.
Thank you. Elizabeth, special education programs seem a little bit like an abandoned stepchild. How do you change the priority displacement of special education and the needs that are there in the community?
Yeah, this is a really big subject. Okay, so first of all, programming is not well-funded at the state level in the state of Wisconsin, so that's a huge challenge to begin with. Our district is really expected to pick up a lot of the services and fund it, and that provides challenges for all of our students. So I'm always advocating for better funding. It also can be very challenging as a parent and family to navigate when your child is experiencing learning challenges or differences, and so I think the more that we can do to support our parents and families and students so that it is a soft place and our district to support them when possible. Also, there's a shortage of teachers in this area, and so I think if we can help teachers, if we can find paraprofessionals who are interested in learning more about special ed, we can help get them more training, and then also just better training for teachers across the board, because teachers do not receive, general education teachers are not always receiving a lot of training in special ed, but all of those teachers will have students in special education.
Thank you. I would mention, too, that we will reserve time in our conversation tonight for questions that will hopefully come from the audience. So if you have questions in the audience, please write them down, raise your hand, give them to Paul in the back of the room, he'll get them up to me, and we'll make sure that they're included as part of the program. We definitely welcome your questions. Appreciate that. Colton, we're going to begin this next round of questions with you. Name three steps the district should take to improve its two-star standing in the DPI scoring system to be a four- or five-star school system.
We've already talked about one of them, and that's more parental involvement in the dis, with their students and in the district. Getting more community support and whatnot from the community and parents is a huge role. And, you know, my second thing was, when, and our opening question is accountability. We need to start holding our students to that accountability level. With that, they need a goal, they need a standard to reach every year. Are we, you know, not doing good as a district? I don't really think that. I think, you know, every year, we're doing really good, and we're, you know, we're growing, but that is also a one-day score, and we got to realize that and see that the district does many great things as for that.
Okay, thank you, Colton. Elizabeth, name three steps the district should be taking to improve its two-star standing with the DPI scoring system to be a four- or five-star school system.
Well, anything that the district needs to do, we're already working on and have been working on, so I think that's important to say. Three areas, I believe, curriculum, staffing, class size, and training for teachers are three areas that we are focusing on and will continue to focus on. Curriculum to make sure that our, all of our materials are aligned with state standards so that what we're being evaluated on for these ratings, we're actually teaching materials that are appropriate based on those ratings. Staffing, making sure that our class sizes are reduced, because the smaller the class size, the better our student outcomes will be. And then also training, to make sure that our teachers are receiving the training that they need on the curriculum that they are expected to teach so that they understand what the best and most effective methods are.
Okay, thank you. Greg, same question. Name three steps the district should be taking to improve its two-star standing within the DPI scorecard to be a four- or five-star school.
In addition to what has been mentioned, those are steps one, two, three, four, five, but really, it is, first and foremost, is recognizing, when you take little pieces of stars across a whole lot of different things, then you may end up with only two. You can't end up with four, but you need to understand what it is, and we do understand what we're working with. We've taken great strides. I'd say the number one thing at this point is, as I've mentioned earlier, and you're going to probably hear me say this again, caring enough to connect with the students where they're at. If we can connect with the students where they're at, that will help, that will give them the drive to want to come to school, to perform at their best level. If they do that, we become a four- or five-star district.
Thank you. This next round will start with you, Elizabeth. And I guess it falls kind of in a consistent pattern with the last question. Name three areas that the district has done a respectable job in the past two years.
Okay, so curriculum, staffing, class size, and training teachers on methods are all of those, all the things that we've been working on. So we have been through a process of reevaluating all of our curriculum for language arts, math, and science, social studies, from the elementary level on up. Staffing, we have been focusing really very highly on reducing class size in key areas where we know it is absolutely essential that we maintain smaller class numbers, in particular, maybe sixth grade, ninth grade, K through three. And also teacher training. All of our elementary teachers are now being trained in very specific, it's called AIM training, to help them understand phonemic awareness and really science-of-reading-based literacy skills, and this will not only support our students who are struggling with some of the areas of reading, that maybe they need that extra support, but it will support all of our students and will lift them all up.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Greg, name three areas the district's done a respectable job in the past couple of years.
Nice job, Liz. That just lined up with your committee.
I know.
I can't outdo that. And though one of the things I now said, a most important piece, is recognizing where the performance- performance is at. You know, as we come out of COVID and just recognizing the impact it had on the students and the staff, and taking a deep breath and saying, okay, with the staff that we have, let's not use excuses. Where can we meet the students where they're at, own that, and bring them from there? And we've had some schools that do an outstanding job of that. Continue needs to be work in that area, but we have the right leadership in place to make sure that we're doing that. Last night, what was presented, we saw phenomenal results from last year just of the enhancements that we've had. So I continue to expect that to go forth with the curriculum and changes that we've been making.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we're gonna start with you. Colton, I missed Colton, sorry about that. Colton, name three areas in the district that had, name three areas, three areas your district has done a respectable job in the last.
I feel like they just read my mind. I was, a lot of things they just said I was gonna say. The the staffing is a huge deal, similar to what Greg said. COVID was a huge setback for our district. And and we bounced back very good off of COVID. We went from being online to being back into person and pivoting and whatnot. And so that that was a huge deal, but we lost a lot during COVID, staffing and whatnot. And so we do have district shortages, but we have done really good in getting more staff, training them. And with training, I I do really value the PD days that our staff has. Those are critical to the student staff achievement that I prioritize so highly. And the curriculum, just last night, I got the opportunity to sit in on the board meeting, and we were making three to four percent increases on our top three goals just this year. And that was English, math, and our attendance rate. So we are doing everything we need to be doing right now.
Okay. Let's start this round now correctly with you, Greg. We've talked about areas where the district's done a respectable job. Name three areas where the district has done a less than respectable job and how do we improve it?
Really, you know, and I keep saying, meeting the students where they're at. It is a lesson learned that we, one of the biases that we have, because we all have biases. So with those biases, we can often project onto the students, as opposed to allowing the students to tell their story. So we can really truly connect with them and meet, meet them where they're at. We, and that's, so dealing with that level of, I'll say, diversity in students, it is a struggle that we have, much like society has, much like we as individuals struggle with. So that's one that we will continue to have to work on.
Thank you.
I can go.
Elizabeth, name three areas the district has done a less than respectable job in the past two years, and what do we do to improve them?
Well, I wouldn't say anything that we do is less than respectable. Areas where I would like to see growth are, it's a priority for me at the middle level. Middle school is a challenging time. We have a lot of resources at the high school, so ninth to twelfth grade. There's a lot of unique opportunities for students who fall into maybe unique categories or are looking for something different. Elementary school really can capture a wide group of students and meet their challenges, but middle school is harder. And I know that it is a focus of ours, and we are working to find solutions, we just don't have them yet. And also, I think we can always do more to enhance recognition of academic success. I think we do a good job, and I think that we can continue to make gains in recognizing our students, because we have some great, great achieving students, and I don't know that there, our community is always aware of what's happening.
Thank you. Colton, same question. Name three areas the district has not done a respectable job in the last couple of years, and how do we address them? How do we improve?
First, valuing our teachers. My number one priority is student and staff achievement. And without, you know, without teachers, we don't have student achievement, and we aren't where we are today in our district. And and so we should, we should continue to value them as highly as we do, if not more. And continuing to have that value of student staff achievement as our number one priority over, you know, that's to the side right now. And, you know, I've gotten a lot of input that our, this referendum is taking a priority right now, and we we can't just have that big number take priority over everything else. We have to continue to move forward and let that come up. My last thing is limiting our distractions in our district, especially in the middle school level. Self faults, they're they're a huge problem with between TikTok and Snapchat and whatnot. Our kids have enough day to day distractions at the schools, we should really limit that a lot more than we already do.
Thank you. This next round will start with you, Colton. Communication to district residents, enough is never enough. What will you do, elected to the school board, to to actually listen to your constituents and then act on their comments?
I do, I think that the district does a great job of communication with our parents. And and what I will do is make myself available at a set time throughout either the week or at a certain time throughout the day to answer any phone calls, messages, emails that a concerned parent or student or staff member for that matter may have. And it's, I think we, you know, community input is much more valuable than people think. And I think we need to have more of that because we have huge decisions coming up, like this referendum, and we shouldn't be left just for the nine board members to make that decision. And then after that, our community kinda freaks out about, like, oh, we passed that? But we didn't have any input from the community first. And that would really be beneficial to have more community input. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, communication to district residents. What will you do to listen and act on the comments that you receive from the board?
Thank you. So I take that very seriously, and I am incredibly active in the community and in the district in particular, because I have children at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. I am literally a part of it all every single day. I am on school grounds twice a day, every day, including summer school. So I see students, I see parents, I see staff all the time. I am able, and often neighbors, as I'm walking to and from school as well. And not only do I get to interact with parents and students and staff authentically in those ways, I also am very active in the PTA groups, the PTO groups at all of our schools. In my district role as school board representative, I also have served as the Janesville Area Council PTA liaison. So monthly, I meet with area PTAs, the leaders of our schools, and also staff, and I help mentor them and support them. And so I really have a great opportunity to communicate with lots of people.
Okay, thank you. Greg, communication to district residents, it's crucial. What do you do personally to listen and then act on the comments that you hear from the public?
I've been completely open to the community and their viewpoint. The sad part about it, and I'm gonna call out the community, I wonder if they truly do care about the school district of Janesville. It has been woeful, the amount of input that we get as a board from the community, unless we were to say that, how about we are closing, no, we're eliminating all athletics. And we would fill up the boardroom because people would care about that. But if we said we were tweaking the reading curriculum and we're eliminating pieces of it, the boardroom would be empty. That is absolutely the most frustrating piece, is that the community just doesn't seem to care enough about what we care about, and that's trying to provide the best for the students.
Thank you. Let's begin this round of questions with you, Elizabeth. The school board operates under what I call the rule of five, that is, majority rules. How do you go about building consensus with your fellow board members in order to see your ideas become reality?
Well, we are individuals, and it is really not our prerogative as a board to try to influence others outside of the parameters of the walls of our meetings as they are held. I think it's important to mention that we have a very high functioning board, and that is because there is a great deal of respect among the board. And I am grateful to the individuals with whom I get to work. And I think it is because we treat each other with respect. I maintain to treat my board, other other board, fellow board members with respect by listening to them, paying attention to the things that they care about and and talk about, but also gently communicating with them in a respectful manner. And I I think that's really the only thing that we can do, is work together in a collaborative manner in a respectful tone.
Thank you, Greg. Same question. The school board operates on the rule of five, that is, a majority rules. How do you go about building consensus with your fellow board members and and bring your ideas to to fruition at the table?
First of all, I share what my ideas are. And what I mean is, it's the students first. Everything, every decision has to start with what's best for the student. What's best for the student? You know, so then if if that is the focus that we all have, yes, we have different viewpoints. And if we can circle it and reach agreement, then it's probably a pretty good choice of wherever we end at. Yeah, we may end up with some five, four votes, which, quite frankly, if we've done a good job of educating, making sure the board is educated on the topics, we're not gonna have five, four, because that seems very divisive to me. And because now you have almost half of the board with a differing viewpoint. And I think talking through things, making sure we are very respectful toward one another, and just making sure you're open to the other ideas.
Thank you. Colton, the school board operates on the rule of five, majority rules. How will you go about building consensus among your fellow board members in order to bring your ideas to fruition at the table?
I haven't got, you know, got the experience yet to conversate and, you know, agree with board members yet, and I look to. But I I do, when I have any big decision on the table, it's exactly what the board does now, research it, understand it, and talk with the people that you're making that decision with, so that you're on the same page. Because if, like Greg said, if we have a five, four vote on a big decision, that means half of our board isn't seeing the same thing as the five were. And we can't have that. We need to be on the same page, we need to get the input that we need, and we need to continue to respect one another and and hear our board members out. You know, they, a board member may say something that I don't agree with, that doesn't mean I'm not gonna under, try to understand it and try to get behind it. But I I do firmly believe that we need to continue to do the things that the board is doing now.
Thank you. This next round, we're going to begin with you, Greg. What's missing in the district's plan to tackle the student achievement gap? What's the missing piece of the puzzle?
Community input.
And how do you rectify that?
I wish I really could rectify that. So when I say that, we have educational experts. Many districts have educational experts, so they know the right stuff to do. We as a board can be very supportive of them. But ultimately, everything has to connect and have the students be first. Have the students be first, connect with them at a level to make school not just interesting and exciting, but where the students see the connection between now and their future. If we can do that, then that makes everything better.
Thank you. Colton, the same question. What's missing in the district's plan to tackle the student achievement gap that we have?
First, we we have a great team at the district building across the district. As we saw, Dr. DeGraff got that award the other day. We have a great team. But what we need to do is start valuing student and staff achievement more, not valuing the $580 million price tag on our district right now. Because right now, we're valuing that more than we are anything else, and we have to remember what teaches our students. And I ask that, I say that in the question base, what teaches our students? A brand new high school does not. It may look cool to walk into, but the teachers are what teaches our students. Invest in our strategic plan that our district worked so hard for and to create. That is what we need to invest our money into so we see more achievement. We have a great strategic plan. Let's invest it and put that out there, and let's start having more achievement and valuing achievement more.
Thank you. Elizabeth, same question. What's missing, what is missing in the district's plan to tackle the student achievement gap?
So I think one of the most important roles, aspects of a student's life is their family life. And I think in many instances, there is a notion that, you know, you send your child to school and they're educated there. But that's not the whole picture. Families, guardians, play a really important part of the educational process. And I don't know if our families truly understand the impact that they make from birth and beyond. I think that there are a lot of things that we can do as a district to help our families understand how they can better support the achievement of their students at home, school, and beyond.
Very good. We're gonna do one last round of questions, then we'll go to closing comments. I know that there's folks that do have commitments that we need to make. And in fact, as I look at the clock, I'm thinking to myself, let's let's go directly to the closing comments and 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 take a couple of minutes for your closing comments. This is your opportunity to talk to the audience and share with them why they need to be thinking seriously on an equal second about casting their vote in your direction. So let's begin that, if we could. Let's start with you, Greg.
I think so for me, the one piece and now a little bit of the background, I've been on the board for sixteen years. And the key piece about that is the experience. But also, I still have the energy. I still care enough about what goes on in the district. I originally wanted to be on the board because that was the conversation around my dinner table. My wife works in the district, my son was at Monroe Elementary School, and as a black student in the district, I had a daughter who didn't necessarily have a good experience in the district. I was for darn sure that my son would have a better experience. So that was one of the reasons why I came to the board. But I wasn't focused on what was best for my son, I was focused on what was best for the student, always, all the time, because if it's best for the student, my son is one of those, it would be best for him. My wife is a staff member, what's best for the student, great staff. My wife is one of those. So having experience and energy, and quite frankly, the foresight of not getting caught up and distracted by the 578 million, because for me, that just is, if we had all of that done, the students aren't any better. We've just repaired buildings. That's not enough. That's not enough. So it will be, remember what's the most important piece, and it will always be the students. The other items that we have to do is more of the necessary piece to make sure that we are in position to to provide the best possible education that we can.
Thanks, Greg. Colton, your closing comments.
Thanks for putting us on tonight. I appreciate you letting us do this. First, rehashing what, you know, some of my goals are. Having accountability and being fiscally responsible are huge for me. And and the thing I want, I want to stress the most is my age. I may be young, but I'm passionate about the Janesville School District, and and I'm willing to do whatever it takes to make the, to continue to make them successful. And I'm willing to learn whatever I need to learn. I went to Jefferson Elementary, then to Marshall, and I graduated just a year ago from Janesville Craig. And the, we we need to continue to have student and staff achievement and continue to value that. And one thing I will stress the most is, when you go to the polls on April second, be educated. Do you want people who do not have experience with the Janesville School District on the school board, or do you want people who have firsthand experience on the Janesville School Board, making those decisions for your kids? Because we have big decisions. Because we have big decisions coming up and you need people who have valuable input on the school board. So I, again, I appreciate your time and I hope to have your vote on April 2nd.
Thank you, Colton. Elizabeth, your final comment?
Well, I'm running for reelection because I really love my job. I didn't plan to be a school board member. I was recruited of sorts and I never dreamed that I'd be here. And yet I believe that everything that I've done in my life has led me to this moment and I would be very sad to not be reelected on April 2nd. I grew up in Janesville. I am the product of two educators. My grandfather served this district, my father served this district, and so now I'm the third generation of my family serving the school district of Janesville. I graduated from Craig. I met my husband at Craig. We have three children in the district, elementary, middle, high school, seen it all, been around for a while. I've served as a volunteer, parent volunteer for 12 years. I was tutoring kindergarten students this morning. I love being here. I have been involved in a lot of projects, programs over the last three years as a school board member and I've learned a lot. And I think that I bring a lot of great experience. My background as a teacher, I was a secondary Spanish teacher and I care very deeply about public education, but not just public education, I care very deeply about the school district of Janesville. I am very active in the community. I serve as a leader in another community organization, the Children's Museum of Rock County, and I also am a local business owner. And so it is a true pleasure for me to be able to represent my district as a family member, also a business owner, and work together to build relationships.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now it's up to the voters. Early voting begins next week. You'll have an opportunity, if you contact your clerk, to get into that cycle of early voting. Election Day is on April 2nd. It's just a couple of weeks away. It's coming way too quickly. There will be another opportunity to visit with our school board candidates next Monday. We will be taking our show on the road to Rotary Gardens at noon. We'll be, we'll be at an event that's being hosted by the Noon Rotary Club and we look forward to having that conversation again then. If you are interested tomorrow night or tomorrow morning, get that right, we've got so many of these. Tomorrow morning, if you're interested in the Janesville City Council candidate races, you'll have a chance to meet the candidates tomorrow morning at 6:45 at Rotary Gardens if you're up and interested in pursuing that particular opportunity. So we've got opportunities for everybody all across the board. At this point in time, I can only encourage you to get to know your candidates, get to know what they, what they believe and you make your judgment come election day. Our goal is to help you to become involved, to get informed, and then you can make a difference in your community. Thank you for the evening and best of luck on April 2nd. Thank you.[1755.88]